Assistant Superintendent Claire Abrams, could you call the meeting to order?
Yes, I will. Mr. Conway?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Ross Sikridge?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. This here is a meeting on the community partnership. It's a subcommittee. And I want to first of all, thank everyone for being here tonight. The, I think that we all realize the importance of partnerships. And we in Lowell have been very fortunate. We have strong partners with our university, University of Mass. and Lowell, Middlesex Community College, our business community, and also our nonprofits. And we have, over the years, had a rich relationship with them. And in difficult times, we work together to maximize our resources. And I think that in the school department, in the last, certainly in the last few years, we have experienced a number of cuts. And it's been very challenging, not just for this community, but for all the communities, and also for the entire state. And more than ever, this is the opportunity that we gather with our partnerships and to make sure that we can maximize our resources for, for the common goal of educating our students. And that's why, and that's why we're here today. There's a, the reason why is we have a motion that was put on. And then today, we're going to ask the superintendent for an update on this proposed partnership with the business community and other agencies to secure a supplemental funds for the school budget during difficult times with the focus on hiring a grant writer and a developer with outside funds. And I think, once again, it's, it's a situation where it's very difficult for us to take on another employee when we're, we're obviously cutting many of our funds. And I think that if the, if the community is willing to step up to the plate and help us out in this area, I think it's extremely important. And it's an, it's an incredible advantage to our system. The, I think we all know that it's extremely difficult right now to be getting our different funds, additional funds from the state and the federal government. And that's where I think that this grant writer and developer can start to focus on different foundations and different corporate monies. And traditionally, educational systems usually don't go in that direction. But I think that with this type of a unique grant writer and developer, I think this would be an excellent way of, of bringing in some supplemental funds that can help our programs that we have in our educational system and to make sure that each and every student receives the best education possible. Before I start, I would like to acknowledge the individuals that have been working on this. It's kind of like a focus group that has been working to help the community partnership subcommittee. And we've been meeting periodically. And there's some of us, some individuals weren't able to make it tonight. And they're certainly very apologetic, they had other commitments. But I just wanted to name the group of people that we have working for us, helping us out and helping try to develop this program. George Duncan, George Duncan has been extremely an important cog here in the city of Lowell and certainly has helped us out in the school department. And as we know, that he's the founder and the chairman of the board for Enterprise Bank. Eileen Dunnehu, welcome, Eileen, and thank you very much for being here. Eileen, of course, has been on the city council, she's been our mayor. And also, she is now, we're very fortunate that she is the state senate, senator for the first Middlesex district. And I certainly, the school system is very, very happy, and we thank you for your assistance here. Kendall Wallace called me today, and he was, wasn't able to make it. Kendall has been extremely helpful in this, in this project. Kendall is the chairman of the board of Lowell Sun. And again, he's someone that has always been there for the enrichment of the school department. Brian Martin has worn in his career many hats, city manager, mayor, city council. Now he's the district director for the congresswoman for Nikki Isongas. And Brian, I want to thank you very much for being here and, and helping us out. Ray Riddick is certainly not a, new to the city of Lowell by no means. He is, certainly has great roots here and, and his family. And Ray, I want to thank you for being here. You've been very helpful. Ray is the executive director of the Greater Lowell Community Foundation. And we also have Claire Abrams, who is the assistant superintendent of curriculum. Thank you, Claire. And Carolyn Rich, Rich Lowell was not able to make it here tonight. She's the co-coordinator of the extended programs for the Lowell School Department. And of course, this committee is headed up by Gene Frank of our superintendent of schools. Before I pass the gauntlet on to, to Madam Superintendent to explain this program right from the beginning, I'd just like to take a minute. And, you know, I certainly, it's a, you people that are sitting here right now have been extremely helpful. You know, a lot of times, waking up at seven o'clock, six-thirty in the morning to go to a meeting at seven-thirty, we certainly applaud you for that. So at this time, I'd like, I'd like, if you'd like, if you want to, take a couple minutes and, and talk about this program or this initiative and some of your thoughts and ideas on it. Mr. Martin?
Thank you very much. I think it shouldn't go unnoticed that most of your volunteers here are connected to the, the high school with Ray Riddick, so graduate, Ken Wallace, George Duncan, and others are veterans of the school committee as Senator Dunnehu is. And so I think that we are not going away. And I think that we're here to volunteer and support the school committee, support the superintendent, and support the community in any way possible. And so that's the first message I'd like to deliver on behalf of the volunteers that we're, we're here as a, as just a sounding board of ideas and support in any way possible to do anything that's good. And I do think that the goal of identifying resources, private resources, to have a grant writer slash supporter of the school system is a critical one. There is, if you read the paper, you read the Boston Globe every day, there's another announcement of some school that received a major grant. And if you don't have your ore in the water, you're just, you're just really shortchanging opportunities for the Lowell Public Schools. So I'm hopeful, as the other committee members are, that we can identify private resources to at least kick the program off and have an opportunity to bring in a grant writer and work through the foundation with Mr. Riddick and all of, all of the volunteers so that over the course of the first year, you have at least an individual in place with the background and experience to start applying. And as I've said in many of the meetings, that, you know, if you were to look at the planning and development staff in the city of Lowell, that most of those folks are funded through grants. And because they keep applying for grants, some of them are standard grants like CDBG, where you have administrative dollars built in. But in most cases, a lot of them have, you know, administrative percentage that allows you to bring more staff. And so that if you could just get the thing going and have someone kickstart the program, if you will, and start applying for grants and that would include additional staff to help implement the, the grants in different programs, that there is a way to help in these difficult times. And I don't think the intention of the, the group is to, you know, identify funds to supplant the public funds, but to support the superintendent of the school committee and the families in the school. So that's why we're participating and we'll continue trying to, to help in any way.
Thank you, Brian. I think that point you made, you brought up of not to, it's not to use it in lieu of. It's, it's to supplement, to help, which I think is extremely important. Senator Dunnehu?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Conway. And I want to commend all of those who are involved in the community partnership endeavor, yourself, the members of the school committee superintendent, and all of those who have been participating on this important committee. You know, one of the things we're all painfully aware of is the past few years have been some of the most difficult years in government. And certainly where you all sit, dealing with budgets and cuts that have been, in many cases, very, very difficult to make. And the net loss is a real loss in terms of jobs and personnel. And, and when you have the goal of having to, you know, try and provide the education that you all want to do for all of the children of the Lowell Public Schools, working with far less resources, it's a challenge, you know. We're all hopeful that we've seen the worst of the economic downturn. There's no guarantee. I mean, last year, we looked at some level funding of chapter seventy from the state. We're hopeful that at least that's the case this year. But nonetheless, that doesn't, you know, bring back all of the cuts that had to have been made over the past few years. And so I think this effort is one that is so important to try and utilize, if there is an opportunity, to look outside to some of these potential foundation funds. I think one of the things that Lowell has always done best at all times, good and bad, is partnerships. And it really is the key, I think, to the success that has set Lowell apart. So exploring this is wise. I can fully understand, and I think all those out there listening can understand that, it's very difficult to take a position when you have very few and dedicate it to a grant writer or somebody who's out on the search for these monies instead of someone in the classroom, you know, where they're so sorely needed right now. That's, you know, that's a decision that you know all day long what you're going to make, and you're going to choose the classroom, of course, you know. So this is, this, it isn't an extra. I, I kind of consider it an essential if, if it can be done. And I think this is a smart way of trying to achieve that through the resources and the dedication of people in the community to look to other, other entities outside that are in the business of providing funds for public education, that are interested in academic excellence. And we can, we've heard of many foundations over the years. But it takes time, and it takes energy, and it takes a lot of, of hours in order to identify and apply for those grants. So I think this is a superb program and a great start to try and, again, increase and add to, you know, the excellence of the Lowell Public Schools.
Thank you, Senator. And I certainly, I think I speak for everyone. I thank you for your, for your efforts in bringing them, you and the delegation for bringing the monies back to the, back to the, to the city. I know that you people have been working very hard on that, and it's a difficult job. Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Conway. We at the Greater Lowell Community Foundation are, are committed to working with you, with the school system to create, to create the, the most, the most robust school system that we possibly can. And we see this as an opportunity to create the public partner, a public-private partnership that has worked so well in the past in Lowell, so many of the things that have transpired in the city over the past twenty-five or thirty years. I think we have the opportunity to build a model here that could be viewed from a national standpoint as a national model for other communities, small cities, large cities, regardless of size, of how they could do business, how they could create additional funding sources to provide those kinds of services to students that, that become so important. Back a long time ago, when I was in the school committee, we had to cut a lot of things out of the budget. It took a long time to get those things back in with the educational reform of the, of the nineteen nineties. And we've, again, we've, we've cut those things, some of those things in the past five or six years. We don't want to see those things go away. The other piece is that the costs are going up. Healthcare costs are, are hitting us, and we've, we've all been aware of the impact they have, how they have exceeded everyone's expectations of, of what they do. And that's kind of a hidden deletion of, of, of resources from, from the system. So we're committed to, to helping this partnership work. The Lowell Public Schools is, is flagship, potentially, and is a great school system. It's potentially, as I said, we could create a national model here and, and get some additional focus to the, the great school system that's been created. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. And I, I, we really appreciate your, your efforts and your creativity in this project. It's been very, very helpful. I, I think just before I pass this on, I also want to acknowledge and thank the school committee, Bob Gignac for being here, and Kim Scott, and Jim Leary, and Mayor Murphy. Thank you very much. Before superintendent starts, if there are any comments from my colleagues first? Anybody would like to say something before the report? Madam Superintendent, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. I must say, and this is not the first time this, this group has heard me say this, the most amazing honor of being superintendent of this city of public schools is that this is a city that cherishes, cherishes their youth. And so the business partnerships, the community partners have always found ways to support our young people. And that is something that, as a person who's had many different roles in this, this system, I have found it an amazing tribute to our youth. So in starting out with the groups, and we have met probably six times together, just trying to get to common ground, I want to say first, I appreciate each one of you who are here, and especially Mr. Wallace and Mr. Duncan, who are not with us today, who have come to almost every one of the meetings, for their, their work with us and for the vision. In public education, we're only as good as the whole. Everybody comes together in this city to do the best they possibly can. And so I will, I'm very, really appreciative of the guidance, the support that this group has given. In our work, we have most definitely come to build goals and objectives of what in fact the work would encompass. And so, of course, being a good educator, we came up with an acronym. So the name of our, our organization that we hope to, to build upon is called LEARN, Lowell Educational Alliance Resource Network. And so the mission of this network would be to bring all of the parts, the people, the organizations, the entities that have always been so generous to the school system, together in a way that's very meaningful. And so we want to improve communications and our public relations of the city in general. You know, as we look at all of the things that are happening around us, public education changing, charter schools, innovation schools, other pieces that have come into play, we really need to do another piece of work that public schools aren't really the best at, and that's public relations and building opportunities for our young people. And so although we, we do a very good job, instruction, and we try and do the best we can with meeting compliance needs, these young people need and deserve more. And so I see that this collaboration will come together to bring opportunities in a lot of different ways. So let me just go over a little bit. The, the need that we have, as this committee knows, and people sitting around the table, as well as our viewers, that we've lost over five hundred staff meeting members over the past years. And some of the programs have been changed over time, the support systems. And so we're coming together to see what has to be part of the core and expanding the opportunities for young people. So the goals of this organization and, and this entity will come together to provide opportunities for schools and businesses to interact productively. We have projects that we're thinking of, and we're looking for funding through a developer and the grant manager. We want to work with businesses to implement programs that are beneficial mutually. I think that I can speak really confidently that the partnerships in Lowell are mutual partnerships. Now, there are many times when you work with partners and, you know, one entity maybe does more work than the other. That's not the case in this city. And so when you work together, mutually beneficial, mutually beneficial, when we're working with a partnership, how are we making the needs of school system? How are we helping the business of the community partner? And how are you helping us? So that's part of the goal. How can we work together? So we've talked quite a bit about mentorships for young people. We have fine people who run businesses and organizations in this city that can serve as wonderful mentors to students in some ways. And also, in some cases, maybe job opportunities, resume builders for our young people. That's part of the work we're thinking of. We want to make sure that we have the resources to our businesses and we provide expertise to staff and to our, our students. And also that we deliver long and short-term goals. Another goal, and I talked about public relations, is to expand the scope of what the work is to everybody. So our, our constituents, our citizens, people who move into the city, know about the Lowell Public Schools, know about the many opportunities that we can, can provide for our young people. And most recently, in a meeting with Ray and Claire, talking about business planning and, and some things we had to get together, as we evolve and come to the point where we can have a grant writer or developer, it's the focal points that make a lot of sense where we go. And actually, it was Mr. Riddick who brought us to the Boston Foundation and said thirteen million dollars for the arts. We looked at several different opportunities that come from different grant funding opportunities. So we, we were looking at focusing our work. For instance, wellness, healthy, nutritional-type pieces, things that we don't actually have in our core curriculum everywhere because of cuts. How do we get our families involved? We also know the world of STEM. Although University of Massachusetts, as well as Middlesex Community College, have been amazing partners in science and technology, education, and mathematics, engineering, mathematics, we know there are many more opportunities. So just as we were looking at other entities that have set up business plans with these opportunities in mind, we have looked at that. And so that's the work that we will accomplish, not hope to, not aspire to, we will accomplish. When you have the quality of people who care about the young people as much as the city of Lowell, I cannot see anything but success. And I just want to say one more thing as far as, as the work. The affiliation with the foundation has been extremely helpful. The fact that a person can work for us, be housed at the foundation, work in collaboration with us, that is a great opportunity. And I want everybody here to know that we already have gotten some interest. And so we have had donations from Enterprise Bank in the entity of five thousand dollars that was, went directly to the foundation, as well as fifteen thousand dollars for planning from the Packer Foundation that has gone directly to the foundation. Mr. Riddick has been taking care of that. For us to, to start making a really great business plan, which we've been working on. And so those are the details to date. But it's not just hopefulness, it's with security that I think that will be very successful and as we roll this out in the future. And I welcome questions, concerns, anything from anybody present.
Madam Superintendent, I, I, I want to congratulate you for bringing this group together. Because I think that you're able to take a look at, who do we bring to the table to try to ensure success? And I think taking a look at that focus group that, that you put together, there certainly is a tremendous amount of talent at that table and a certainly a wealth of, of understanding and a wealth of information that they are bringing to this school system. And the bottom line, I think, is that this group also knows the school system. They understand the city. And I think that's, that's a big part of it, to be quite frank with you. I think that, a question I have, you mentioned about the, the wellness as being one of the, one of the ideas. What are some of the other ideas that, if you could look down the road, and, and I know that we're going to have success with this, what other areas might you think that would be a good idea to concentrate on for, for our students? As perhaps, as, as something that might help supplement their education?
Thank you, Mr. Conway. The first that we've been looking at for, for a while, there was a motion, I believe, that came from you in this, was talking about childhood obesity and nutrition. There's lots of funding, there's lots of opportunity to kind of make some kind of programs, and that's education. So that was one piece. The other part I talked about a little bit was, was STEM. You know, so getting our kids mathematical thinkers. There's many different funding sources, as you look online, for even different subgroups of children. So looking at young women, making sure the mathematics and science is the way to go by grade six. There are programs, and, and when we're looking at our, our school system, that we have lots of pockets where we can use some assistance. And that's support for children who don't have access to after-school programs, to Saturday programs, to productive programs. So we're, we're going to look and see where the biggest funding sources is. But right now, those are the two that we've been looking into, STEM, as well as childhood obesity, nutrition, and actually, of course, the arts and sports. We would, we remiss, you know, Mayor Murphy and I have spoken about, you know, in, within the years that we're, we're together as a team, we would love to see Saturday City Chorus, or dance troupes, or things that are productive learning for our children. We know we have some technology, lots of technology work that has to be done, but clubs like that. So I don't want to get off-base, but with some focal points and whatever, that will be important for us to develop. We're developing that business plan to say, where will we look at first? And what will we develop? And we'll have, when we have especially the developer on, on, on board, then we'll look and see what the focal points should be. And I do want to thank Mr. Leary, because Mr. Leary was part of the business community partnership that made the motion to even go forward with, so this started with last committee, and he was on that committee, so also Mr. Leary for your involvement in this. So those are the, that's the focus that we're looking at, Mr. Conway. And I, I believe that communication is always ever-present. So as we look at what we're going to focus on, it's just open information. So as we go, the committee and everybody on this team knows what we're working at, what the short-term goals are, what the long-term goals, and we get to the, the topics at hand. But all we want is our kids to be interested, ready, and thrilled in what they're learning. And so this will add to that.
You know, Madam Superintendent, I think over the years, we certainly, and I've been in the system a number of years, and certainly I have seen cuts, as, as Mr. Riddick has, has alluded to. Over the years, it's, it's been a constant cut. And as you said, we've lost over five hundred positions, five to six hundred positions in the last five or six years. And that obviously takes a toll on, on, on the children's education. I think that quite often, when we take a look at it, and as, as the Senator mentioned, our concentration, of course, has to be in the classroom, which I think we probably, we all agree on that. However, in these difficult economic times that we have been faced with, a lot of those programs that you just mentioned tend to fall by the wayside and tend to, to be cut. Sports, and I mean, how many times did we debate back- Sports, and I mean, how many times did we debate back and forth about clubs and sports and activities? And it's a shame, but it's something that obviously we had to deal with, because there's only so much money on the table. And that's what I would hope that, that might be one area that we could perhaps take a look at, is we talked about the enrichment programs for students. You know, technology, we have seen certainly a tremendous hit in technology, and it's something that, and I know Mr. Leary has been working on that quite a bit. And I think that's something that we have to take a look at for grants down the road too, because, you know, I don't think our budget is going to be able to take care of all our technological wants and needs and desires. And I think the other, another area that I have quite often seen cut in the past would be the arts. And that's a shame, because, you know, I think it's part of a student's education to help round it off an individual. Not everyone is a quarterback on the football team, or not everyone, you know, is someone that enjoys chess. There could be someone else that loves music or the arts. And I think that we need to give them the best rounded, well-rounded education that we possibly can. And I also want to say that, I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Martin, actually, because we discussed this a number of times. And the first idea, of course, came up was a grant writer, and we discussed that. And I think Ms. Martin certainly has taken it to a completely different level. I think a level that has brought people like yourselves here at the table, because she added that opponent in, developer, and then explained how important that beat equation. And certainly, you did bring that up, because that's extremely important. Anything else, Madam Superintendent, that you know about the program going forward, plans made for the public?
Just to know that the organization endless, there is certain thing you get core standard, standard recharge, have, and so presenting public, that performing, that's expressing us through the arts, through technology. And so in school system, as a leading team, we need to be pleased for, that everybody that they get to grade four, we have to sign, we have to see convention conventions, one of my friend a few days.
What is that one again?
Convention convention, and to make a, I mean, all of the programs, but I was trying to perform it, just so kids know thing and come back on special that has a function to it. There's all the possibilities that you lose out on when you're here and there, and you're saying, you know, we need to present, so yes, the great one have service, and we're going to the museum and art. Those are things that we built, we need to have events for young people. Beyond education, oftentimes, we create our memories. And so this is the way for us to look at, how do we, our youth. So I think that, as I said, as a city who was youth, can't help it, like that, a local school's become a signature. And you can't always do that logo, and you can't count on it, but you just build up. Every kid deserves to have certain events, and not just go to this school, that school, because it's the way we do this. So I have been, I'm always excited to educate, I know that. But this group has helped me to know that there are amazing resources, and there's a way to do this, it makes a lot for the city. And so I thank each of you, everybody who has paid in, and that's something I know a lot.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I just want to take a point from the meeting about the role of committee, the volunteers. It's a misunderstanding of our position as a volunteer group, actually not to dictate to the community superintendent, what you would do. Would be to build partnerships, raise for grant developers if they happen on the road, and what grants programming that you want a grant writer to buy for, would be the role of the committee, and the superintendent to determine what you think be the specific priorities that this person, or person took down the road, determines actually if they have a pension funds program. So we just, and not to determine what you would, in any way, you put in an example, if there's a, for programming funds for wellness, would be so, for hospitals and communities, some of the businesses that our group might, that we might have, or doing a mentor grant, you want to assess, we might have those that may be potentially a partner with any school, but we might be, we work with our profitable company that we, the foundation that might be, that's what we, that's what we, for, no matter what you want, okay?
As to my, this computer table, I said, if we look at the, I don't think we have that on the table. It's hard to work, and we're going to continue, knocking all the, probably going to make a few, some road, make lakes, and I think right. People have the will, and the effort to move forward, and I think it's going to, again, be out in the rest of students. Yes.
Thank you. I just want to, with the comment you just made, but with the committee, all of us here, you all, people, to care of education and the children in the public, in this group, in a way, it hasn't, or a higher, whatsoever. And so I think that's important, sometimes people may think, oh, it's some kind of shadow school, not at all, you know, not at all. If you're on a dry seat, there's a best, like raising the roof, that's half the time, so for a reason, right? And we come out, but that's really important, you know, bringing, everybody brings other experts to the table, trying to pull together, and you all, you call the, when you lost that.
Well, I thank you, Senator. I think that, looking at this, we obviously aren't working, and if you want to work in the back, you want to tend to sources that knowledgeable, so to be quite frank with you, and I think that, you know, that's, I think it's the will of the committee, to do as much as we can, and certainly thank the people for being here. Mr. Leary?
First, I want to say thank you very much for taking the initiative. We started, I think, about three and a half years ago, we were cutting $10,000 in an effort to try to change the dynamic and be more aggressive, collecting as opposed to just receiving money from the 70s and from the government. I think the leadership I've seen from folks, we're going the right direction. And I want firstly, thank you for taking, I know it's been a long way, but I think changing the dynamic, being one who go out seeking money from all sources is going to be positive for the school environment, and as a person who served in the past six years, it's a good go-down. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Yes. Take it with you.
And also, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for, I think it's important when we look at our systems, and we actually see how solid we really are, and I think it's important that we not be so ignorant in, do we have to do to our awareness, media, our, have a connection with our, and our institution with the, and, thank you.
Anyone else? Then entertain a motion for a vote of progress by Ms. Martin, and it's going to be by Mr. Kowd, John F. V. opposed. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, I really appreciate, and I thank you for being here shortly at another early meeting. Thank you.